Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, councillors, members of the public and officers. Before we begin the meeting, can I draw your attention, please, to the fire regulations? They should be on the screens around the building. Make sure that you isolate and you identify your exit. And if you hear the fire alarm, then we meet under the canopy at Waitrose. Could you all make sure, please, your mobile phones are turned off or switched to silent? And councillors, can you make sure that your card is securely in your console so that we can hear you on the webcast? Members of the public, we understand especially that the matters under consideration tonight are highly emotive and we understand your emotions, but please, could we ask you not to join in the conversation other than at your allotted spot? And we'd be delighted to hear from you during the public speaking. But apart from that, please, could you not join in the debate once the councillors have started? Can we move on then? Oh, I'll just introduce the officers before I forget. So my far right, that's Lewis Jones from the Legal Department, Steve Weaver from, he's the interim Development Control Manager, Jane McMullin, Planning Officer who is presenting tonight, Louise Jandell, the Team Leader for Southern and Western, and Ruth Dovey, who's presenting the Other Application tonight. Thank you very much. Minutes of the last meeting, they have been laid out. Are you content that I sign them as a true record?
Agreed.
Apologies for absence, Emma.
We have apologies from councillors Pip Frost, Stephen Hill, Peter Ishwood and Martin Lee.
Thank you very much. And do we have any declarations of interest?
Before the meeting, Farnham Town councillors have got a non-perpetual interest in the applications.
Does anybody else have an interest they wish to declare? In that case, can we move on to questions from the public? Have we received any, Emma?
None received, Chairman.
Brings us on then to item five, the relevant updates to government guidance or legislation. And Steve Weaver is going to tell us about PIPs.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this is just a follow-up from the email that I sent to all councillors yesterday afternoon regarding the new system that's just been launched, an alternative method for gaining planning permission for relatively small-scale residential development, up to nine dwellings. It's Permissions in Principle, or PIP for short, and it's a two-stage process. Firstly, the Permission in Principle stage where the planning authority settles the question of whether a site is suitable for development, and if so, how much, and then followed by a technical details consent. In some respects, that two-stage process is not wholly dissimilar to the current provisions for outline and reserve matter applications, but there are some very significant differences in terms of the time scales and the scope of considerations associated with PIP applications. We do only have five weeks in which to decide an application for permission in principle, and the scope of our consideration is limited only to matters of location, land use and amount of development. And the actual application process is very stripped back, shall we say. There's a form and a plan to be provided and the appropriate fee, and that's about it. And then the officers have to reach a decision in five weeks on that basis. With only five weeks to determine it, there are also pared-back provisions for public consultation. The regulations only require that a site notice be displayed for 14 days. However, it has been agreed that in line with what we normally do with normal planning applications, we will write to adjoining neighbours. However, they'll only have 14 days in which to provide their responses to us. And clearly, that might give councillors some questions and some queries from residents as and when we get our first permissions in principle applications. So to try and get ahead of the game, when we get those applications in, we'll be fast-tracking them through the validation process. We'll be notifying you directly when we do have receipt of any applications, and we'll also be notifying the town and parish councils directly on the day of validation, so that hopefully we can all be on the front foot in terms of dealing with this rather different, fast-tracked regime that's been introduced. There will be the provision for referrals to committee of these types of applications, in theory, but we've only got five weeks to determine them. So unless we can get extensions of time, we will then run the risk of appeals against non-determination, just as we do with normal applications. So can I therefore suggest that as and when you get any on your respective wards, please do liaise with the case officer in the first instance about any questions or concerns you might have. We may be able to iron them out. It may be matters that we're already concerned about ourselves, or it may be something which is actually quite reasonable. Clearly, it's another method by which the government is trying to speed up the flow of residential schemes through the planning system, reducing the barriers and paving the way for certainly smaller-scale developments to get the amber light, if not the green light, because they still need to fill in the technical details once the permission in principle has been granted. We haven't received any as yet, and I don't quite know what the take-up is going to be. But as I say, officers are here to assist you if you have any queries as and when they are received, and hopefully the note that I circulated is going to be of assistance to you in that regard. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. As ever, I don't want a long debate on this because it's all very new. What it does show is that we are going to have to be very careful when our lists come out, check them, check what's available, check what we need to do in terms of calling them into committee, talking to the officers and also site visits. So it really is, we're all going to have to sharpen our game. Councillor Storey, you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Am I right, Stephen, in thinking that most of this will not apply to Farnham because it doesn't apply in special protection areas?
Okay, so yes, one of the factors is that the regulations relating to permissions in principle do prohibit PIPs being granted, either in respect of development that's a subject of environmental impact assessment, or development that's likely to have a significant impact on a European site. So yes, large swathes of the western areas and other parts of the SPA affected of Waverley Borough will not be affected by this, however, those areas that aren't will.
Right. Does anybody else wish to comment? I think it's something, as you say, we're just going to see how it develops across the borough, something new for us to think about. They like to keep us on our toes, don't they? Moving on then to the loose sheet that we have for Performance Planning Service Performance Indicators. Hope you've all got the extra sheet, and that's Steve again, who's going to talk us through these.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, my apologies that this didn't find its way into the originally published papers. You've got the updated position as regards the performance of the planning service on the two government criteria of speed and quality that takes us to the end of April this year. You'll see from that that excellent performance figures have been maintained in terms of speed, both on major and non-major categories of applications, and that's testament to obviously a great deal of hard work on behalf of the entire department in terms of keeping focus on those figures, and they are excellent results. In terms of performance on quality, so that's the proportion of appeals that are allowed, as usual, the situation as regards the non-major applications, we are significantly below the threshold, which is, I don't really expect to change, but it's good news to see that maintained. And in respect to the majors, what we're seeing over the opening months of this year is an improving situation. Currently, our best estimates put us at 8.7% for the year April 17 to the end of April 18, and that's receding from the threshold of 10%. And again, that's an improving situation. It's a reflection of probably of the local plan having been adopted and is very encouraging, I think, for us as a council. So really, just for noting, Chairman, but a good set of results and an improving picture on the appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a bit of good news for us. Does anybody wish to make a comment? In which case, can we move straight to the main business of the evening, the applications for planning permission? If a site inspection is necessary as a result of consideration of applications at this meeting, they'll be held on Tuesday, the 3rd of July, at a time to be agreed. So moving on then to the first item, this is an item subject to public speaking. It's item A1, WA 2018 0466, at 18 West End Grove, Farnham. And it's Jane McMullin who's going to introduce this for us, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, this application site is located on the north-eastern side of West End Grove. The site currently comprises a two-storey detached dwelling with detached garage to the north-east of the site. There is an enclosed garden to the rear of the site and some parking to the south-east. West End Grove is an unmade road, which is residential in character, and it increases in level from the south-east to the north-west. And the current site can be seen in the following photographs. So photograph A shows the front of the property from West End Grove. Photograph B shows the current rear elevation of the property. Photograph C shows view towards number 16 West End Grove. Photograph D looks towards number 20 West End Grove to the north-west. Photograph E shows the current view of number 18 West End Grove from number 16. Photograph F shows the views of number 18 from the rear of number 12 Parfitt's Close, which is to the east. And photograph G shows the views of the current rear elevation of number 18 from over the border at number 20 to the west, oh sorry, to the north-west. This shows the proposed block plan. It shows that, so there's going to be, this would be a single-story side extension, and this part would be a two-story rear extension. The proposed two-story element would come no closer to number 16 than the existing two-story element, which is 4.7 metres from the boundary with number 16, which is in accordance with Waverley SPD for residential extensions. There would be a total separation distance between the two dwellings of 15 metres. The extended rear of number 18, here, would sit 1.8 metres closer to the boundary with Parfitt's Close. However, there would still be a 5.3-metre distance between the rear elevation and the boundaries of Parfitt's Close. And then there would be a further six metres from the boundary to the actual dwellings themselves. Officers consider these to be acceptable separation distances. These are the proposed elevations of the development. The front elevation shows a single-story side extension with a low-pitched roof. The southern side elevation shows three roof lights on the side extension and the two windows, which would both be obscure glazed. There would also be a further roof light. This obscure glazing would ensure there would not be views towards number 16, and this would be secured by condition. These windows would also be fixed shut to a height of 1.7 metres above finished floor The rear eastern elevation would have two first-floor high-level windows and, oh sorry, they both would have a sill light of above 1.7 metres above finished floor level. This would help to maintain privacy towards numbers 11 and 12 Parfitt's Close. It would also have a cat slide roof, which would reduce some of the visual bulk. Furthermore, an existing rear window would be bricked up. And then the northern side elevation, which would be seen from number 20, this shows the sloping cat slide roof here. I've also included 3D sketches of the proposed development, if those help you perceive it. So this is again from the front view, and this would be sort of from the rear view. The proposed floor plans show that at ground floor level, the extension would be used as a hallway and extended kitchen dining area, and at first floor level, it would be a bedroom and a stairwell. A previous application for extensions were refused last year. The block plan for the application is currently shown. It shows, or included a proposed two-story and single-story, or two-story side and two-story rear extension. As you can see, the two-story side elevation was a lot closer to the boundary with number 16. I think it was 0.7 metres from the boundary, which wasn't acceptable. This application was refused as officers considered the proposals would have an unacceptable impact on 11 and 12 Parfitt's Close by way of loss of privacy and on the adjoining occupier at 16 West End Grove by reason of loss of outlook and overbearing impact. In conclusion, officers consider that the extensions proposed would appear acceptable, and there would be no materially harmful impact on the amenities of the adjoining occupiers. The extension would be more visible from the habitable rooms of number 16, but this is not thought to be harmful enough to warrant refusal. The obscure glazed windows on the southern elevation would ensure there's no overlooking towards number 16. The extended rear elevation would only be 1.8 metres deeper than the existing, and the high-level windows proposed would not lead to a loss of privacy to the residents at Parfitt's Close. The proposal would result in an increase in visual presence again, but this would not be harmful. There would not be an unacceptable loss of light or outlook to these dwellings. The matters of principle or technical opinion are the standard of accommodation, car parking provision, and the effect on the SPAs, which Louise is going to further elaborate on once I conclude, and the matters of judgment which members are now asked to consider are the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jane. And as you say, Louise is going to carry on.
Thank you. Some concerns have been raised that residential extensions that increase the number of bedrooms within a property could have an unacceptable impact on the special protection area. The council have consulted with Natural England, who are the expert statutory consultees on issues relating to SPAs. Natural England have confirmed that their unit of measurement for strategic solutions is the number of new dwellings created. This is because the creation of new households creates recreational pressure that could lead to harm within the SPA. As you'll be aware, you can have any size house with any number of people in it. For instance, a two-bedroom house could house five people, or a 10-bedroom house could house just one person. This obviously changes over time as properties are sold, when people have children, meet partners, et cetera. Natural England have confirmed that it is not within our remit to control this. As such, an average is taken, and any new dwellings are used for assessment. The proposal at number 18 West Grove does not create a new household. The average household occupancy rate in Farnham is very low, and there is no evidence to suggest that a residential extension would increase the occupancy, the average occupancy rates across the area. As such, any increase in population as a result of this proposal would result in a de-minimus increase in population overall. It is not considered that the addition of one bedroom to an existing property is comparable to a new dwelling, which would result in the increase of an additional household. As such, officers have the view that the proposal would not result in any likely significant effect on the special protection area, either alone or in combination with other extensions. And for this reason, an appropriate assessment or further mitigation is not required. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for that clarification. That's the end of the officers. Yes, thank you. As I said earlier, this is subject to public speaking. So could I ask first of all, please, an objector, Mr Vasilevsky? Would you like to come down to any of the seats that you prefer? And I think, Emma explained to you, press the large button, and the four minutes won't start until you start speaking.
Good evening. My name is Tom Vasilevsky, and I'm representing numbers 11 and 12 Parfitt's Close, in addition to our own property, number 16 West End Grove. I'd like to start by saying that at no point have the applicants sought to discuss or engage with any of us over this proposed extension. Had they done so, I'm confident that a suitable compromise may have been achievable. Both the application and the photos just shown fail to illustrate that number 18 has an unusual relationship with our property, number 16, whose only amenity space, i.e. our garden, is adjacent to the boundary with number 18. This side-to-rear relationship was recognised in an earlier planning application and means that the proposed extension overlooks our dining room, kitchen, two bedrooms, as well as garden. Nor does the application, or all the photos shown, show the effect of the rising gradient which puts 18, number 18, above number 16. We therefore have fundamental objections to the proposed extension on the basis that firstly, it does not meet Waverley Borough's SPD retained policy for extensions, specifically it materially breaches the 21-metre minimum distance between windows, it materially breaches the 18-metre minimum distance from our respective boundaries, the proposed bedroom four is not provided a view, as the only floor window is specified as being of obscured glass. Secondly, from our perspective at number 16, these distances are all the more important due to the side-to-rear relationship with number 18 and the rising gradient. Furthermore, the proposed new bedroom window in the south-east elevation presents a breach of privacy as it directly overlooks our amenity space at a distance of no more than five metres and is less than 15 metres from all but two of our habitable rooms, and is positioned directly opposite our teenage daughter's bedroom window. This risk is acknowledged by the planning officer's condition number four, that the window be of obscured glass and fixed to a minimum height of 1.7 metres from the internal floor level. As this window is indicated on the plans as a fire escape, this condition contradicts fire regulations that require bedrooms to have an openable window not more than 1.1 metre from the floor. We therefore would expect that, should the proposal be approved, a retrospective planning application will be made to revert to an openable window, resulting in the loss of our privacy. The proposed extension remains overbearing to the occupants of the bungalows at number 11 and 12 Parfitt's Close, affecting their habitable rooms and only amenity areas. As a consequence, we believe the proposed extension does not meet the following: the retained policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, policy TD1 of the Local Plan Part 1 2018, Farnham Neighbourhood Plan Policy FNP16, and the Farnham Design Statement. In conclusion, we strongly believe that the application represents overdevelopment and compromised design, resulting from trying to overextend a property that is already in close proximity to its neighbours. We therefore ask you to refuse the application due to its overbearing effect on numbers 11 and 12 Parfitt's Close and the loss of privacy to our property at number 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Vasilevsky. Could I now ask Mr George Hess, who I think is speaking on behalf of Farnham Town Council? Once again, it's the large button, and the time doesn't start until you start speaking, Mr Hess.
My name is George Hess, and I'm the recently-elected Farnham Town Councillor representing Castle Ward, in which planning application WA 2018 0466 to erect a single-story side and two-story rear extension is located. I'm here tonight to express the collective view of Farnham Town Council. This application was considered by Farnham Town Council's Planning and Licensing Consultative Group at its meeting held on Monday 9th of April, when it was agreed to object to the application on the grounds that the extensions were not in line with the Farnham Design Statement and Farnham Neighbourhood Plan Policy FNP16, and the negative impact on a neighbour's amenity to the rear of the property. The use of obscured glazing in a bedroom is not acceptable in living accommodation. The decision to object to this application was upheld by the meeting of Farnham Town Council's full council, held on 12th of April 2018. Whilst it is recognised that this application has met a number of the concerns that were expressed when previous application number WA 2017 1467 was refused in September last year, the town council still has significant concerns. This application has been reduced in scale and appears to have overcome the concerns of residents of Parfitt's Close, and particularly the residents of numbers 11 and 12, who were concerned that the granting of the original application would violate their privacy. Although the privacy issue appears to have been resolved, there is still considerable concern amongst residents of Parfitt's Close that granting this new application would be overdevelopment of an already crowded site and would result in an overbearing building. This new application does not, however, resolve the problems that would be faced by residents of number 16 West End Grove, who, from their detailed submission to this committee, are strongly objecting to the impact this extension will have to their privacy, due to the unusual aspect of the two properties, where the rear garden of number 16 is adjacent to the side of number 18, which, due to the sloping nature of the road and land, sits higher than number 16. And the window of proposed bedroom four at number 18, although specified as obscure, is also specified as a fire escape window. And there's obviously a contradiction there, which means it could open. This in practice could lead to the direct overlooking of their teenage daughter's bedroom as it is directly opposite at eye level, also other habitable rooms and the whole and only garden of number 16, the prospect of which the owners of number 16 find totally Farnham Town Council believes that the current application should therefore be refused. Farnham Town Council does, however, believe that scope exists for extensions to be made to number 18 West End Grove with relatively minor changes to the current application, which could both meet the needs of the residents and resolve the concerns of neighbours, and would hope that this matter can be resolved by amicable agreement in due course. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr Hess. We do have with us the newly-elected Waverley councillor for Castle, councillor Beaman. Do you wish to speak to the committee at this stage?
At this stage, Chair, I think the presentation has been more than eloquently presented to you and all the arguments, so I have nothing to add at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Beaman. So councillors, over to you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you. If I may, open the batting as the ward member, a ward member for Castle Ward. Yes, as councillor Beaman has said, we've heard very eloquently the position of the objectors to this, and I myself find those arguments quite compelling. I won't repeat them all, but I do think it can be separated into four different areas, really, that we need to look at tonight. And one is the overlooking of Parfitt's Close. Now, having been on the site visit with yourself, Chairman, and councillor Ward, I think that was very valuable. I agree with you, as you've said, that where overlooking is concerned, we really do need a site visit. So I thank the applicant and the neighbours for making it possible for us to have a good look and understand what they're trying to explain to us. And there's also overlooking of 16 West End Grove, of course, and that's a sort of a different issue, really, because of the design. I would like particularly some clarification from the officers in respect of the issue of the openable window, because obviously if that is openable, then we cannot consider it that it wouldn't allow overlooking. Another issue, of course, is the amenity, the overlooking, not only of the neighbour's garden at 16 West End Grove, but also of building on their own garden. And that's a big consideration, I think, myself, because looking at the plans, you can see that the building on that site would, well, it looks like it would, construction would take more than two-thirds of the entire site, so there wouldn't be an awful lot of room left for the people living there. Now, they're putting the application in. Now, they're putting the application in, consider that acceptable to them, but we have to consider whether it's in keeping with the other properties and whether it's in character. But in terms of design, which is, I think, one of the biggest issues here, the question is whether it's out of character not only with the other buildings in the street, but more perhaps with the existing building, which has already been extended, whether the extension on the extension is acceptable to us. If you wouldn't mind bringing up the three D drawings, because I found it very useful when we were on the visit to understand what was being there, being seen, the view from Parfitt's Close behind. To me, that simply looks as though it's detracting considerably from what isn't, you know, from what is quite a nice building, actually. I don't think that it's perhaps the best solution, as the public speaker said, that perhaps something better and more imaginative could have been worked out for this. And the other issue, of course, is the SBA issue, which I've just received a response to. I will admit, this property doesn't lend itself well to a two-storey extension because of its closeness to the other properties. It is difficult to design something that's functional and fits in with the existing house as well as being acceptable, and I don't think that this has been met. But I'll happily listen to other members' views and perhaps wrap up later if we see what other people think of it. As far as the decision we're making tonight, I see it in some way as being we are here to draw the line between telling an applicant that if you need a bigger house, you'll have to move, and telling the neighbour if you don't like your loss of amenity, you can move. Somewhere there, we've got to draw the line and say, you know, yea or nay that there has been a previous application withdrawn, but this is different. I do think that myself, the further extension to it is perhaps too much for the plot that it's on. So I hope other members will bring up some of the questions that have been raised in respect of the distances between buildings and whether it complies with our policies in terms of the, particularly, residential extensions guidance that we have, and get something solid there for us to make our decision upon. But I'd just like to wrap up with mentioning the response that we've had just before the meeting from officers in respect of the Thames Basin Heath issue. We've been told Natural England, of course, are a statutory consultancy, we have to take their viewpoint into consideration, but I think all members are probably aware that Natural England's approach has been found by ruling to be wrong. So to put a great deal of faith in that, we certainly have to question it, and my questioning of that really is about whether they've understood the whole point or not.
Can I just interrupt you here? You've already said that this committee is telling people when to move and where to go, and it certainly isn't. And you're now talking about an item that we have had an answer to before you started. And I'm not going to go into a long debate on this. We've had the results, the information from the officers, and there's plenty of time outside the meeting. If you want to make a point on it, by all means, but we have got advice from the statutory consultancy, Natural England, and until we have anything else, that is what we must go by. So please, will you not prolong this just to air your own grievances?
Not at all grievances, chairman. Just a two-line quotation from the response which we've had in order to make the point, I think, would be sufficient, where the response says here that the proposal would not result in any likely significant effect on the SPAR either alone or in combination with other residential extensions, and for this reason, an appropriate assessment and mitigation is not required. The whole point is that we can't say that without an assessment.
I think we're going to have a point of order here. Excuse me, councillor Potts?
Yeah, chairman, do you think that we could actually, please, and I'm sure that my colleagues would agree, we could actually move on and debate the application before us? Councillor Hyman has had the answers. We've debated it numerous times. I think we'd all like to actually get back to the application before us and ask the valid questions that a number of us have got on this application, and I'm sure that my other colleagues and members here tonight on this committee would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Potts. Can I see a show of support for those who would just like to get on with the business of the meeting? Can I see those who want to debate the SPAR further? Right, in that case, I will take it we have to do abstentions, do we, on that as well? Right. Can we now move back, please, to the matter in hand, which is the extension at eighteen West End Grove? And I'll come back to councillor Hyman if he has some new points. Councillor Potts?
Thank you, chairman. It is actually a question for officers. I wonder, given, I know the objectors have spoken at length about the window, which obviously is a concern, do you think we could have, please, a little more clarity in terms of the window? Does it meet fire regulations? Because that's actually where I'm a little bit hazy. So I think we'd all find that helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Fire regulations isn't a planning consideration, so it's not something that we have looked at, and I wouldn't be able to comment on it with authority because I am not fully aware of those fire regulations. However, in relation to overlooking from the windows, we have put a condition on the, should members choose to approve the scheme, there would be a condition on the permission to state that those first-floor windows within that south-east elevation shall be fixed shut to a height of one point seven metres above finished floor level and shall be glazed with obscured glazing to the extent that intervisibility is excluded. So officers are satisfied that whilst there would be windows in that elevation, visibility wouldn't be possible out of those windows towards number sixteen, either towards their amenity space or towards their habitable rooms which are in that facing elevation. Thank you.
I do recall when I was giving one of my children some windows, at least one of the upstairs bedroom, even though on a regular basis it didn't open peculiarly, as it were, you have to have some mechanism so that you can pass through in the case of a fire. I think we are all worried about this use of obscured glazing. I think, you know, we do need certainty that the amenity in the actual extension is okay and also that we can protect the amenity of next door, and I think we're all in that position. So anything, anybody else can add to that to, you know, help us make the decision, we'd be very grateful. Thank you.
If I could just add that the room in question has a obscured glazed window in the south-east elevation facing number sixteen, it has a high-level window facing Parfitt's Close, and then there is a roof light in the roof. So this room wouldn't have a particularly great outlook from the room itself, however, it would be served with adequate light from all of those three windows. And inspectors generally take the view at appeal that it is the homeowner's choice to create a room like that with very restricted outlook, and it isn't something that is generally supported at appeal. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Louise. Councillor Ward?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've got a couple of observations and questions for the officers, which perhaps they might look at or think about while I speak. On page nine, we've got a couple of drawings of the building, one of the ground floor, one of the first floor. When you look at them, they're different sizes, so it's very difficult to imagine how the ground floor and the first floor fit together. If I remember, the first floor appears to be rather larger than the ground floor, and it would be helpful in future if the scale of these things could be the same so that we could look at them. And on page thirteen, we have a great list of neighbour responses and whatever, but nowhere can I find, either in here or on the website, which neighbours were notified. My memory may be failing me, but I think we used to have a list of whom we had actually notified, and I would find that quite useful, and I would appreciate officers' comments on that a little later. Yes, I went on the site visit, and looking through the, I think it's fifteen neighbourhood neighbours' objections, they do seem to come down to the bulk and mass of the thing, the overlooking and the proximity to their particular residences. I thought about this obscured window, which is obviously going to cause us a certain amount of difficulty. I went to one of the windows in my house and covered the bottom, whatever it is, with tracing paper, which is sort of semi-opaque, and I thought, hmm, what a wonderful view for a child to have. And if someone's got ideas that that is a great place for anyone, child or perhaps a disliked grandmother to stay, I really don't see it. And I'm always interested in what is a planning matter and what isn't a planning matter. I know it's not within our bailiwick. I remember one of my first forays into planning about twelve years ago, I was told sewage wasn't a planning matter, it was something to do with Thames Water, and I thought that was really quite strange. I quite take on board the fact that, I'm sure the officers are right, that the fire regulations probably aren't a planning matter, but if we have this window bolted and screwed shut, and then the fire brigade arrive on an assessment of the house and say, I'm sorry, you have to have that window open, I think the fire brigade wins that one, and so bolting up of the window actually is going to fall completely. So I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of someone having no outlook, because I presume the person in that room is going to be less than one point seven metres tall, they're going to have obscured glazing, which is, like I said, staring at tracing, nothing to look at. That I can't go along with. Having walked around the place and looked at the overlooking of the other houses, if one removes the glazing from that window or makes it openable, it does change the thing completely, and I'm convinced that will happen. So unless someone can, oh, and looking at parking, I seem to remember there was comments that parking didn't quite meet our standards to start with, but what was not being made any worse by the extension. Generally, one of the ideas of improving and extending houses is to make them a little better. So I'm not convinced that I could be persuaded to support this, but I am willing to listen to others. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this? It is very much an unbalanced one, as we saw at the site visit, which is why it's committed. Does anybody else wish to comment before we move straight to the recommendation? Councillor Beaman, do you wish to speak at this point?
Just very briefly, Chair, thank you very much. I think it's actually amazing that you can say that fire regulations are not a matter for planning, but fair enough, fair enough. And it's, but I would say this, I would say, if you go back to the opening comment of the objector, he says that there could be an amicable solution which would benefit both the residents and, in fact, the, you know, the people who would be wanting to build this extension. So it's not an all or nothing situation. With, you know, with some dialogue, I think we can come to an amicable agreement on this, but this particular application, I believe, should be refused.
Right, members, can we move then to the recommendation? The recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to the conditions one to five in your report and informative one. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please? In that case, do I have to do the vote against? Yes, sorry. Right. Could I see any of those, anybody who is against? Did I miss anybody? Oh, right.
Yeah, that's unanimous, that's fine.
No, I don't need exemptions. No, right, fine, just to make sure. So please, could I have not reasons, but just an alternative recommendation, please?
Yes, may I propose?
Councillor Hyman?
May I propose that it be refused on...
Just, right, your alternative recommendations, it's refused.
You don't want the grounds, absolutely.
Fine. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Potts, thank you very much. Then now, please, have our reasons for refusing that application.
Yes, retained local plan policies D1 and D4, overbearing effect on numbers eleven and twelve Parfitt's Close, and TD1 local plan, FNP16, loss of privacy on eighteen West End Grove, Farnham Design Statement. I don't know whether we can put in anything in respect of the, particularly the concern regarding the obscure, use of obscured glazing in bedrooms and the access flexibility, whether that can go into something, because I think it's a very big part of our decision, chairman, but I don't know. I would like some help from the officers perhaps on that. And of course, I would add that there is no appropriate assessment, contrary to Article six three and Article six four, and no imperative reasons of overriding public...
Can I take somebody else now, please? Councillor Hodge?
Thank you, chairman. I can, I was curious about this obscured window, and I looked at the planning portal guidance today, and it's quite specific, the use of obscure glass is not considered acceptable for windows serving bedrooms, dining rooms and kitchens. It's very specific. Can we not use that?
I'm sure we can, councillor Hodge. And I've said to the officers earlier, I always feel it is a poor design if you have to resort to obscure glazing in a habitable room. I'm sure that an extension is possible on this house, and I'm sure you can do it in a way that does not need a window like this with obscure glazing and with the complication of any exit in case of fire, which I know is not a planning one, but we certainly don't want to make life to injures. So has anybody else got anything to add before I see if the officers have turned that into something usable? Right, so officers, did you manage to, or do you want a little more time?
Yes, please. Councillor Hyman commented on the overbearing impact on eleven and twelve Parfitt's Close. Was that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just wanted to draw members' attention to page fourteen of the agenda report, which sets out the reason why the previous application was refused, which is a material consideration for members to take into consideration. The extension in that situation was larger than the proposal which is put forward now, and that application was not refused by the council on the overbearing impact on number eleven and twelve Parfitt's Close. So I just want to advise members that it could be found to be unreasonable at any appeal by introducing a new element to the refusal reason that is in effect a better relationship than was previously considered.
Thank you, Louise. I think when we look at that previous, I mean, I think really we are saying much the same thing, that we don't think that the changes have been enough, that we still think the scale is too large for the site. So I think, you know, more or less what we said earlier is what we're saying tonight, isn't it? The reason of its scale, sighting, positioning of windows, is that not what we're saying in slightly different words?
If I can just clarify, that reason for refusal effectively refused it on the loss of privacy on eleven and twelve Parfitt's Close, and then on a loss of outlook and overbearing impact to number sixteen West End Grove. So the comments that members have made is that it would have an overbearing impact on number eleven and twelve Parfitt's Close, which wasn't, which was refused because of the loss of privacy on those properties. So just wanted to make it clear that you would be introducing a sort of new reason for refusal which would sort of conflict with that previous refusal.
No, I was trying to say we wouldn't introduce new words. That's what I was trying to say, that we would use the existing words. We still don't feel that the changes to this application have addressed all the issues that we raised in the previous application, and that's why we're continuing to refuse it. That's what I was hoping, I was saying.
Okay, so, sorry, I misunderstood. So in which case, what I would also caution members about is the loss of privacy, given the high-level and obscure glazed windows. But if members are particularly concerned about those windows in relation to the neighbouring properties, then they could refuse it in relation to number eleven and twelve Parfitt's Close by a reason of the perceived loss of privacy, because there are windows in that rear elevation. But I think it would be unreasonable to refuse it on actual privacy, given that they're high-level, one point seven metres above finished floor level.
I think, again, what, you know, we're trying to say, but I don't think we can put it in planning terms, that the, it seems to be a very contrived design because basically the site is so limited and, you know, and it is surrounded, and I think this is what we're trying to find words to say, that we felt it was overdevelopment and would have a harmful impact in various ways on various properties. a harmful impact in various ways on various properties. councillor Storey, and then councillor Heeman.
Thank you, Chairman. I know that we cannot have as grounds for refusal the fact that the building regulations wouldn't allow this to be built. I mean, there must be some way of incorporating that into our refusal. I mean, the building regulations are quite clear that habitable rooms on the first floor, that includes all bedrooms, must have a fire egress no higher than 1.1 metres from the finished floor level, an area of 450 millimetres by 450 millimetres, and positioned so that the fire rescue service can actually get a ladder there. But a 1.7 metre window that you cannot open will never meet building regulations, and so this house, this extension, could not be built.
Steve's been bursting to answer, councillor Storey, so if you could turn your microphone off, you may just find out whether you're right or wrong.
I understand the sentiment entirely and clearly, fire escape and fire regulations is all to do with the building regulations. We're not here to make a decision based on the building regulations. And whilst I understand the sentiment, it would introduce a ground for refusal whereby we're effectively refusing planning permission because it doesn't comply with another form of legislation, and that we will always be found wanting in an appeal in that scenario. So whilst I completely understand the logic, the reality of life is refusing permission on grounds it wouldn't meet building regs, would not be a sustainable reason for refusal.
But we'll keep working on it. I've got councillor Heeman next, and then councillor Potts.
I see the problem there as actually being design, and is that, can that not be something which is mentioned under D1, D4, or, you know, other issues of design there? Because obviously if a design is impractical... I mean, I see a large part of my own concerns with this proposal is the, the design to me is not, is a long way from what I think is, could be provided on the site. So, and particularly the amenity also of its own, the reduced garden space that it has itself, is there something in terms of amenity for the owners, the applicant, that... Because I see that as a big part. It makes it out of character with the rest of the street, where people have got ample gardens, whatever. Is, can that be included?
I think our wording does do that, but perhaps Louise will come back, and then I'll take councillor Potts. Could you turn your microphone off, please?
I think the refusal would be strengthened by sticking to the impact on the adjoining occupiers, which is something that's been clearly expressed by the members this evening. The impact on an occupier's own amenity space, as well as the creation of a room with only obscure glazing, is not something that is likely to be supported at appeal, and I think your stronger argument is about the impact on the amenities of the adjoining occupiers, and I think any appeal would be more successful if you stick to what is the stronger argument in this instance.
Thank you, Louise, we'll take your guidance. councillor Potts?
I'm entirely happy with that. I'm sorry to keep going on about this, but it seems absolutely bonkers to me that we have a situation where we have an application before us that basically, unless I'm getting this horribly wrong, doesn't, if it were to be built out, doesn't meet building regs and potentially doesn't meet fire regs. And whilst I fully appreciate that legislation is such that we can't give those as grounds for refusal, I think I speak on behalf of the public and everyone in this room when I say that that is an absolutely ludicrous situation, and I do wonder if there is some form of narrative we can at least put in a letter. I mean, it makes me wonder, how can someone actually be advised that this is actually acceptable? And I know that as officers, you have to determine the application purely under the various policies that you're tied to, but actually, there's something slightly larger here going on, and I think if there's any way, even in the refusal letter that goes to the applicant, it could be put, please, they, and I'm sure that my colleagues would support this, the actual concern that was expressed at committee on those two points. I realise that we're really limited in what we can do or say, but I think we should say something, because I, for one, find it absolutely appalling.
Thank you, councillor Potts. Yes, I think Louise and Steve are both nodding there. I think they can put your mind at rest and come up with a solution. Is it in the letter, is it an informative?
Yeah, so what we could do is put an informative which would be printed on the decision notice to express the concerns that have been raised by the members in relation to those non-planning issues.
Right, I'm only going to take councillor Ward now, I think, before we wrap up, because we really have done this one thoroughly. So councillor Ward, what do you wish to add to this?
Kind of you, Madam Chairman. Yes, I was just going to thoroughly support what councillor Potts was saying, but I think the officers have picked that up. In my initial speech, I said, you know, that they're going to build this house, and then the fire brigade are going to come along, completely overrule us and say, well, that window has to be openable. And the consequence of that actually is that they've built something in violation of planning approval, and we could then go and knock it down. And this, to me, seems just a totally ludicrous sort of merry-go-round that we might get into. So somehow, perhaps, we can put it in that if that window was openable, it would be milled in, contrary to planning permission, and would have, shall we say, potential liabilities to the owner.
And then we'd be into enforcement and all sorts of things. Can we now have a look at the reason for refusal, please? Louise, have you managed to put something into proper English?
Yeah, so on the basis of what members have said this evening, and I'm pretty much going to use most of the previous reason for refusal on page 14, I would suggest the following. The proposal, by reason of its scale, sighting and positioning of windows, would have an unacceptable impact on the adjoining occupiers at 11 and 12 Parfitts Close by a reason of a perceived loss of privacy, and on the adjoining occupier at number 16 West End Grove by a reason of loss of outlook and overbearing impact. The proposal would conflict with policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, policy FMP16 of the Farnham neighbour plan 2017, and policy TD1 of the local plan Part I, Strategic Policies and Sites 2018, and paragraph 17 of the MPPF. Thank you, Chairman.
And how can we ensure that the informative goes on the decision notice?
So the, yeah, the informative will be something along the lines of just reminding them that they should ensure, in any future application or any appeal, that they ensure that the development would comply with building regulations in order to meet that requirement.
Can I put that recommendation, please, then? That permission is refused for the reasons that Louise has just outlined, basically the same as in your report, except putting in the perceived loss of privacy to cover ourselves with those high windows. Can I see, please, all those in favour of refusing permission for those reasons?
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And can I see all those who are against refusal? And any abstentions? So permission is refused, thank you very much indeed. If anybody in the public gallery would like to leave at this point, and you can't do it quietly, so don't even try, you're... The chairs will do it for us, don't worry. Now we're going to look at application B1, WA 2017, treble two, three, which is land to the rear of the substation off Raccosham Hill in Raccosham, and it's the construction of an energy storage facility and the associated works. And it's Ruth Javi who's going to present this one for us, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Before I start, if I could just draw committee's attention to the written update sheet, where the site address has actually been amended, but I'd just like to reassure committee that the appropriate consultation with the amended site address was undertaken. So the site is located on the south side of Raccosham Hill. On the location plan, the long line filled in in orange is the access track leading down to the site. The site is outlined in red, and then the infill bit in yellow is the actual compound itself. So if you go to the aerial photo, this provides you with a bit more context, you've got the settlement of Raccosham just here, you've got a large electricity substation located here, the site is outlined in orange here, and you'll note that there are some commercial units just to the north here. There are also, there's also a commercial unit on the northern side of Raccosham Road. There are residential properties here and here, either side, and the red line on this plan denotes a footpath that runs along the eastern boundary of the site. The planning designations for the site are that it's countryside beyond the Green Belt, it's an area of great landscape value, and an area of strategic visual importance. So this slide really just details the existing lawful uses on the site. On the left-hand side, outlined in blue, this part of the site is considered to still be an agricultural use. The remainder of the site that you see on the site is in general storage use in relation to construction civil engineering businesses as the result of approval of a certificate of lawfulness last year. So turning to photographs, photograph A is a photograph that shows you the storage buildings that sit to the north of the site, that you can see as you approach the site down the long access track. Photograph B is a picture of the access track down to the site, and you can just about see the entrance to the site just there. And photograph C is taken from the site entrance and shows you how the current use appears in the landscape. Photograph D is taken within the site and shows the existing storage containers on the site, and photograph E is taken just south of the site from the footpath. Before I go on to the proposed layout plan, I thought it would just be useful to confirm to everybody exactly what a battery storage facility is. It's essentially a facility that enables the storage of electricity from the grid, so battery energy storage, which is provided near to and connected to the local grid, allows available power surplus to demand to be stored and then resupplied at high demand. So the technology improves efficiency as it receives electricity from the grid, which would otherwise be lost at times of oversupply, and feeds electricity into the grid at times of undersupply. It also supports renewable energy, and this is true of this particular facility. The rise of renewable power has increased the need for these types of facilities. Renewable sources, although of environmental benefit, bring problems to the grid because they're a variable or intermittent output, which place burdens on the grid in terms of being able to match supply to demand. System operators therefore need to employ new tools to balance that supply and demand. I also thought it would just be useful to outline why this particular location, because there are very specific reasons. So the district network operator for the area has given the applicant permission to connect to the substation to the north-east of the site that we saw on the aerial. So not all substations can accommodate a battery storage facility, because the substation has to have a surplus capacity, and this one does. An available supply is generally, available capacity is generally in short supply across the country, and so therefore there are any limited options in terms of where these battery storage facilities can be located. So the project will enable the district network operator to make better use of the capacity on its network and get more out of the local electricity infrastructure. And due to the costs of construction and system losses, sites more than one kilometre away from the substation would not be viable, and this further adds to the constraints on site selection. So with all that background, if I go to the detail, so effectively, these rectangle, these green rectangles are energy storage containers, so they just look like a standard storage container, they would be white, and they would be 2.2 metres in height. The black rectangles are transformers, and they effectively look a bit like containers, and they would be 2.5 metres in height. You then have, to the north, in the northern part of the site, you have what's called a high voltage container space and a metering switch house. These buildings would be four metres in height, and they are required to house the cabling that is needed to connect the battery storage facility to the substation. So looking at that in elevation, if I start at the south elevation, this long line here is effectively the containers that house the battery power packs. These structures that you see here, they are the transformers, and then these two larger structures here are the metering switch house and the container space. The applicant, in order to assist in screening the development, is proposing some landscaping. Much of the landscaping will comprise indigenous species. So if I can just explain, that essentially the compound is located here and would be surrounded on that line by a 2.4 metre high fence. So the landscaping that you see around the compound here would be outside the fence, so the fence would also be screened. So in terms of determining issues, one of the key considerations is the impact of the proposal on the air break landscape value, the air strategic vision importance, and the countryside beyond the Green Belt. So in terms of the visual impact, the existing and proposed uses are similar in terms of their visual appearance, because you're effectively almost exchanging the existing containers on the site with proposed containers. However, and hopefully it's been conveyed from the photos, that the existing lawful use has a pretty unkempt appearance. So to a certain extent, this proposal would tidy up the appearance of the site. It would also bring benefits, because additional landscaping of indigenous species is proposed, so there would be screening. There are also commercial uses in the vicinity of the site, as we've seen from the aerial photo, with commonly reclaimed to the north of Raccosham Hill, and the storage facility immediately north of the site. So given the existing situation on the site and the surrounding land uses, it's not considered that the proposal would be out of keeping, and officers are of the view that there is a marginal improvement. In terms of impact on neighbours, noise and disturbance is really the main consideration. However, the proposed use is low-key in this respect. The site would only be visited 12 times a year, effectively once a month to check that everything is in order, and there would be limited noise emissions. This, obviously because this would be an improvement over the existing lawful use, as because it was granted under the certificate, there are no conditions attached to it, so it's an unfettered use with no limits on hours or intensity of use. Therefore, the development, this development is considered to be a better neighbour to the residential properties in the vicinity. A final benefit is in terms of sustainability. The proposal provides infrastructure development and neighbours the use of renewable energy. It improves the efficiency of the natural grid by storing energy at times of low demand and resupplying it to the grid at times of high demand, and this is a significant benefit to the proposal. So if we move to matters of land use, given the benefits that have just been outlined of the proposal, officers are of view that these benefits outweigh the loss of this site as an employment site. There would also be a loss of a very small parcel of agricultural land, but again, officers consider that this would not be harmful. Other matters relating to highways, biodiversity impact on the SPEAs, contaminated land and trees, we've sought advice from the NESSO experts, who have raised no objections subject to conditions. So the office's recommendation is for approval in accordance with what is set out on the update sheet. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ruth. Just before I move, can I just remind members, this is the Western Area Planning Committee. Some of you find it very difficult to concentrate on planning when we're dealing with housing... Some of you find it very difficult to concentrate on planning when we're dealing with houses. Goodness knows where this conversation could end up, but we are looking at this as a planning issue, please. We're not here to debate energy and all these other items, although they obviously are related. So, please, can we just concentrate on what we're here to concentrate on and not to get carried away, please, by our own perceived expertise? councillor Ward.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before I start, could I encourage officers to give me an answer to the question I asked at the first time, of which neighbours have been consulted and notified, and can we please have a list of that in future in all our applications, so we know who has been notified and who hasn't? I have a slight personal interest in that, as I live further down Raccosham Hill, and since I didn't get a letter, I assume I am not affected by this in any great amount. But it would be very useful in these applications to know who was notified, because I'm sure we used to do so. But I will leave that with you for the moment, but I would appreciate an answer. This is one of those lovely sites where one makes a mess, and then offers to clean it up and make it look pretty, and expects to get permission. And I did like the officer's comment, there will be a marginal improvement. I sincerely hope there'll be a major improvement on the mess that I looked at yesterday morning. However, given all that and my general rant, I have to say that generally, this seems to be a good idea to actually have storage in a place where, excuse me, it's not hitting everybody in the eye. So, my inclination is to approve it unless someone else comes up with something that they don't like about it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Ward. We certainly did have a list, I remember, I can't think where we used to see it. Ruth, did you want to come back on that? I saw you sort of indicate, oh, it's Louise, is it?
Yes, it did used to be shown on the website, but the IT system that we used to use is now unsupported, so we have had to move to a new system, and that is no longer possible to be shown on the website. However, for every application, we will always consult the statutory neighbours, which are those which join the site, and those which are directly opposite, and that is as set out in the adopted statement of community involvement. So, that will be the same for every application, no matter what it is for or what scale it is, it will always be those neighbours that directly join or are directly opposite the site. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks. Not at the moment, Ruth wants to add something.
Sorry, if I could just add that because this is effectively a departure from policy, because it's an employment use, there was also a site notice that was put up, and a press advert went out as well, on this particular application.
councillor Ward, you wish to come?
Yes, I saw the notices on their gate. There are two of them. One is saying it's without policy, out with policy, and the other is saying this is the planning. Unfortunately, the one that's out with policy has been stuck on top of the other one, so unless you take with you a pair of scissors and a large thing, you can't actually read the second one. But it says in a agenda thingy, notices have been sent to the neighbours. I don't think it would be too much effort to say that notices have been sent to numbers five, 10, six, and whatever, which I think, for me, and I think for all of us, would be rather better than having to grovel round a map and see which neighbour abuts it and which neighbour doesn't. It wouldn't really create much effort.
I think, yes, I think we'll take this outside the meeting, councillor Ward, and show it's something the officers...
Apart from that, I think it's a good idea.
councillor Pritchard?
Thank you, Chairman. I've got just a couple of questions. One is, it says there's going to be minimal noise from this area. Do we know how much minimal noise is? Does it peak? What time of the day does that come? Is it being reported at a particular decibel or something like that? And another thing is, is there going to be any security lighting, any, because I can't see in the planning application about any lamp posts or anything in the area that has to be there? And finally, it says there's a track to the site, which is also a designated footpath. What type of footpath is that? Is that a special footpath? Thank you.
I'll come back to the officers on those. councillor Fraser, you wish to speak?
I was the ward member who called this in. I took the trouble to phone Harmony when I first saw this scheme, because of an interest I have with the scientific aspect of lithium battery storage. And I was treated a very courteous description by the gentleman at Harmony, who mentioned the existence of a report that he had submitted with the planning application to Waverley, but was, it was commercial in confidence. I sought advice and I sought permission from Ruth to view this technical report, which I suppose it was submitted by way of reassuring the planners, but in fact, I found it quite alarming. Because this is a matter of...
Can I just interrupt you there?
Safety, I might continue with that sentence.
Thank you, but I will, you know what I'm going to say, councillor Fraser. I know you're very knowledgeable on the subject, but please do try and relate it to the planning application.
I just thought an introduction would be sensible, Madam Chair. I have received a great deal of assistance, by email and telephone, from Ruth Dovey in the planning department, for which I would like to thank her, but I was reminded very firmly by her that matters of safety, public safety, cannot be taken as an issue in the planning. I'll start with the title, it says, and has said throughout until today, that it's to the rear of the substation. It is not to the rear of the substation. It was moved from that position because the rear of the substation would be too mighty close to housing on each side, east and west. So, they've moved it, and it's 240 millimetres west along the road and 85 millimetres south. So, it has to be connected by cabling between the substation on the north side of the A325 to this application site on the south side. And that is not mentioned anywhere in the agenda, and I wonder whether Surrey County Council of Highways know about it. It is 50 millimetres, 50 metres, 50 metres outside the built-up area shown on the Farnham neighbourhood plan, which gets a mention in the agenda, but not a lot. It is also, in being beyond the green belt, an area of, in an area of great landscape value, and in an area of strategic visual importance. Now, these are all three serious planning constraints. I know the existing yard is a bit of a mess, but it's pragmatic planning taken to an extreme, when someone who makes a mess of a piece of land can then seek planning permission to make it look better. I think that's really perverse. Scenically, the area is seen by planning to be mixed character, and this jeopardised by the paraphernalia associated with reclamation. But this is an area which is used for storage for a company that actually employs people who are living locally in Farnham. By taking away their storage area, you will jeopardise that business, and you may jeopardise the employment. In seeing that the energy storage system is seen to be no worse than the said paraphernalia, it takes pragmatism just too far, and I think this is a really strong case where enforcement should be used. But I understand now that because it was given permission in section 109, was it, section 106, then that, that, no one can enforce the site condition. It is an alien, commercial, an industrial intrusion into a sensitive area, and it immediately surrounds in Raccosham. It's outside the boundary set by our plan. It serves no useful immediate purpose for the inhabitants of Raccosham, but the district network of the national grid. As you've described it, Ruth, it's 15 bright white steel containers, 2.2 metres high, with eight transformer stations and two switch houses up to four metres high. The plan shows 31 clusters of five cells, which is 155 cells, and they've only, to my knowledge, been tested singly. 155 is quite chilling. It is within the 500 metre buffer zone for an ancient woodland, yet is said to have no harmful effect. The buffer zone is there to protect the woodland from harmful effect. Hazard assessment, assessment submitted by Harmony in our planning department has not been forwarded to the environment department. The environment department, somebody asked to comment on noise and smell or something. The safety aspects are surely relevant to the Harmony department, the planning departments as well, but particularly, I think in this case, if you can't deal with it under planning, it's very germane to the environment department. They tell me they've been trying to seek assurances from the health and safety executive, but have yet to secure any. I would certainly invite my fellow councillors to oppose this proposal as being an intrusion, damaging to the visual amenity, and of some strategic risk. I would certainly oppose it myself. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Fraser. councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. I thank councillor Fraser very much for the work he's obviously done in looking into this, and whilst I'm not entirely sure that I would take the same precautionary approach in terms of proximity to ancient woodland and that sort of thing, that might be going too far. I am very concerned about what he says in respect of the environment, our environmental health department having sought information and not received it. And I think my own position at the moment, in view of that, if what I've just heard is true, and I will assume it is, I'd like to know from the officers whether anyone here can confirm whether we are still looking for information in respect of safety, whether this is untested, and where there might be concerns we ought to know about. And if so, I would ask that we defer it until perhaps we've got some, not too busy a Western planning, hopefully in the future, but I would want that information before I made a decision on it, if...
Shall we ask the officers if they've got that information?
If you don't mind, thank you.
Certainly, I think, as has already been reassured by councillor Coburn, health and safety is not within the remit of planning to consider. However, I have been liaising extensively with councillor Fraser on this matter, and also with the agents, and they have advised me that before construction is commenced on a development, they are under an obligation to inform the health and safety executive that they will be commencing development. And at that point, it falls in the remit of the health and safety executive to undertake site inspections that they think necessary, and undertake any investigative work that they need to do to make sure that everything is up to their health and safety standards.
Thank you, Ruth. Could you bring up, just before I take Louise, the principle that what we're supposed to be looking at in terms of planning terms for this? We've seen that picture, I think we've all got that one, yes, just that one, it'll do fine. Louise, you wish to come back?
I just wanted to add that the environmental health team were seeking to speak to the health and safety executive, not because they have any role as a regulatory authority themselves, but to assist councillor Fraser in his inquiries. So, it wasn't in relation to the planning application, and we are not awaiting any additional information before we can make a decision this evening. It was really just to try and get some additional information from them for councillor Fraser himself. Thank you.
So, members, the point that we're looking at here is there is an existing use that's lawful, and we have got another proposed use, and you have to judge whether or not the impact on the countryside, the impact on residential amenity is not acceptable. That's what we're here to look at, please. I said at the beginning, I don't want to get bogged down in details, it's nothing to do with planning, and we're already going down that way. I'll see if I can take somebody else first, councillor Hyman, then I'll come back to you. Does anybody else wish to add anything on this? Okay, councillor Hyman then?
I just wanted to thank you very much indeed, the officers, for their response in clarifying that, because that has assuaged my concerns. I did want to just add that the concern in respect of lighting, there is condition five on page 43, which, councillor, Sam, I can't remember his surname.
Pritchard.
Sam Pritchard, yes, councillor Pritchard was concerned in respect of condition five, I think, but I'm happy with that one myself. So, yes, you've assured my fears, thank you very much.
Ruth, yes, before I go to the recommendation?
Sorry, actually, I just need to come back on the remainder of councillor Pritchard's questions. There was one relating to noise and disturbance, and our environmental health team have looked at the detail in relation to that, and they're satisfied that it wouldn't result in any harm to neighbouring residential amenity. And I had a specific question with regard to the designation of the footpath, and as far as I'm aware, it is a footpath rather than a bridleway or something other.
Right, does anybody have any last minute questions, or can we move to the recommendation? Everyone happy? Can we move then to the recommendation, which is in your report? The recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to nine, that included all the fencing and the lighting and the other matters that people may be worried about, and informatives one to four, that permission be granted. Can I see, please, all those in favour of that recommendation?
That's eight.
And those opposed to that recommendation, please? And is there any, no abstentions? In that case, the recommendation is that permission be granted. Item eight is the exclusion of persons public. We don't have any matters that we need to exclude you for, and so I close the meeting. Thank you very much indeed.